All right, good morning, everyone. Sorry we're running a few minutes behind. Will you join me and we're going to stand for a prayer and a pledge of allegiance.
Dear Lord, we thank you for this day today. Thank you for this beautiful weather that we're having, Lord. I pray that you'll be with the leaders of this county, Lord, as we make the decisions today, Lord, for our future. Pray you'll guide us in each and every one. I pray that you'll be with our first responders, Lord, our military all around the world, Lord, today, and keep them all safe, Lord. You can help and guide us, Lord, and just thank you for all your blessings. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the people of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, welcome to our March, excuse me, February 24th, 2020 meeting, our final meeting of the year, just after 9:00 a.m. We'll begin with item number one, public comment time. If there's anyone here that wants to address the court on a non-agenda item, this is your If not, we'll move on to item number two, considering possibly approved minutes from our last meeting, two weeks ago, February 10, 2020.
Make that motion.
Motion for approval of the minutes made by Commissioner Applewhite, seconded by Commissioner Parker. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Joyce, for preparing those. Item number three, a report from commissioners regarding roadwork status. I'll start with Commissioner Precinct Four.
We've been patching mostly and hauling some route from, I called, texted out to ask them about the other pile, the one over 19 to 1993. It had gotten so wet over there that we couldn't get in and out, so I called them and asked them about moving down to the one at White Oak on 259 down there. It's as close, just a couple, three miles closer than coming all the way out north of town out here for us, so they said that was fine, go ahead and get it. So we've hauled a couple, three days when we didn't have something else going really, or if it was raining, we hauled route. This Thursday, I'm gonna have First Street from the city limits out to the Loop and County Road 4340 and 4330, about a mile of 4330. I'm gonna have it closed from 8:30 till noon. We're gonna be putting out ROC, which is that road overcoated I've been talking about. We've got it set up to do it, and then either the 11th or the 12th, weather permitting, we're gonna do 4660 on both sides of 1735, and then 3155 on the north end of it where we have had seal coded it last year, or back, back last summer. So that's kind of what we're looking at right now. We're gonna have pretty busy this week, and then again, I'm waiting on the other one until Chapel Hill Schools close for spring break. So that's what we're looking at right now.
Good idea. And when will people know that those are closed? That day, or can we give them any advance notice?
I'm gonna, there's not but one house, which Jeff McLendon lives on First Street out here. The others are several, and it's a cut-through road, so I'll probably send some flyers out, put some flyers out for-
Okay. Jeff knows? You've talked to Jeff?
Yes.
Good, okay.
And so-
So this will be our first time to see how the ROC works?
We, Dana and I, and a couple of my guys went with me to Mount Vernon last, well, Friday was a week ago, and they were putting some out up there, and we went up there and looked at it. He carried us over and showed us the road that Charlie did, that they had done two years ago, and it still looks like it had just been done. So we decided to go ahead and do it and see what it looks like.
Good, okay. Thank you.
Well, we've been cleaning up trees, and we've got, put in several culverts on the main, on the main blacktop roads this last couple of weeks to the washout, and Beaver and 3920, they just keep damming it up, and we're going to replace that culvert. And we're also gonna close a couple of roads about the, between the 12th and 13th of spring break to try to seal coat, or ROC, a couple of roads we got to get under control. And we're putting in culverts today, and we got three to put in today and tomorrow, and we're fixing one right now. It's just, just hang with me about the weather, you know? We can't do nothing with the rain. You know, people been complaining about the roads, and, you know, you can't put asphalt there, it's about busting out, and you're just throwing money in a hole, you can't keep it in there. And I just hope they just have patience, and I'm getting to it. Rain has really cost us time.
Commissioner.
All right, during all this rainy week or so, we cleared off several bridges and some, some big culverts. We've been cleaning those, cleaning some ditches, cleaned up several trees that were down the last few days. We did patching when we could, and we've got side cutting. We've been doing side cutting north of Highway 67 in my precinct, so that should, should just about be done in another week, north of 67, so I can travel elsewhere. And on County Road 2910, we're extending a culvert and building a head wall on a, about six-foot culvert there. We're working on that, too, as we, as we speak, and I have a fresh load of that high-performance coming in today, so I can start back on some patching. Get some good dry weather this week. That's it.
Thank you. Commissioner Riddle?
We are.
Will you pull that, pull that mic up?
We've been battling the rain the last two weeks, mostly have replaced some culverts and getting trash and limbs and trees off the road. It seems like it's been a busy time. Can't, can't catch up. That's it.
All right. Thank you. Item number four, considering possibly approve, a memorandum of understanding between Safety Shelter and the Titus County Attorney's Office. Today, in a moment, I'll introduce you to Ryan Shriver from, from Safety, and our county attorney, John Mark Coburn, wants to tell you about this joint effort that he's discussed with me. It sounds like a good deal for the county.
Gentlemen, I want to have Ryan speak to you just, just a moment, but just as a background, prosecutors' offices are required to provide information to victims of family violence, and the sheriff's office and the police department also provide information. So initially, on the scene, they have victim assistance coordinators that, that give, help victims, provide them information, and then later, at a later date, then my office reaches out to them. A lot of the services that we talk about, the Safety Shelter does. They're the ones that give those, provide those services. So what I thought, talking to Ryan, would be a good idea, would be allow the Safety Office to take over the responsibilities of reaching out through my office, for my office, and talking and helping those victims. And so what that does is, that allows the people who are experts in the field of helping these victims have that initial contact, well, not initial, the police department, sheriff's office has the initial contact, but that follow-up contact allows them to have that follow-up contact instead of my office contacting them, telling them to call the Safety Office. The Safety Office is gonna be able to reach out to them directly. So I think it's gonna be a good program. I think it's gonna, it's gonna help victims, and I'm gonna turn this, let Ryan tell you a little bit more details about some of the things they do.
Let me ask you just a quick question, and either one of you can answer this. When is the initial contact made, say, with the victim? Kind of walk us through an example. Is this immediately after an arrest, or is this later in the process, after there's a conviction, or?
Almost immediately. Ryan, Ryan can tell you.
Okay.
So with this MOU-
This is Ryan Shriver.
Hi, Ryan Shriver. I'm Executive Director of Safety Crisis Center. We own four properties in the city, but a lot of our staff and clients and myself who live in the county, I live in the precinct, too. So a lot of times whenever a victim, whenever there's a situation in the house, the sheriff's office will, will direct them to John Mark Coburn. And then somewhere down the line, we might get involved, or we might not get involved, depending on what resources that they need. This MOU just solidifies this agreement, so we're able to get in contact with the victim directly after a situation within three days, and then provide those resources to the family.
And the sheriff's office does that as well. So there's, there's good, to me, there's some redundancy in that. The sheriff's office provides information, and we provide basically the same information that Ryan's office, the Safety Office, actually provides the counseling and things, and some of the things that we get, we tell them about, they're the ones that actually do it. So we're going to just provide Ryan the information and victim's information, and then Ryan's office, their victim assistance coordinator will reach out to them directly. Instead of our victim assistance coordinator, my office reaching out, they're gonna do it.
Typically, this will happen, what, what kind of charges do we have? A family violence case, a terroristic threat, an assault?
Assault, family violence are the primary cases that this is gonna be addressed.
Okay. And Safety is, has been involved in the past, but this is gonna kind of cut out the middleman here and let them be the primary point of contact on all of these, okay?
And there's a lot of things that they do, counseling, for example, that, that we can call them and tell them that it'd be, it's better if they're from the source, if they're from us. So I think, I think it's gonna help victims, and so it makes a lot of sense to me.
Who drafted this MOU?
Ms. Goble and I. Ms. Goble's their attorney.
Okay, Deanie Goble, okay. All right. Commissioners, this is a necessary service. It's a good service. We've also have the, we talk about each year, that Savin's Grant, where it's a notification to victims after somebody is being released from jail or from prison. This is, has similar objectives, but this is gonna kick in at a different time. I mean, initially after the infraction has occurred. So I think this is a good deal, and Ryan, we appreciate Safety being willing to do this. Y'all know a lot more about this than the county attorney does, and what best to communicate with these victims, so thank you for offering this. Commissioners, do you have any questions here, either for Mr. Coburn or Mr. Shriver about this, before we vote on whether or not to approve this MOU?
No, maybe I don't.
All right. If you would like to enter into this memorandum of understanding between shelter agencies for families in East Texas and the Titus County Attorney's Office in order to provide services to victims of domestic violence and sexual assault, we'll need a motion to that effect.
Make that motion.
Along those lines, allow me to sign that, give me the authorization to sign.
Yeah, and, and I'll say that, you know, we were considering whether or not we even needed to come to the court with this, but John Mark felt it was best, and anytime we're entering into a contract or an MOU with another agency, it's best to let you all know about it.
Make that motion.
Motion for entering into this MOU with Safety is made by Commissioner Applewhite, seconded by Commissioner Parker. Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Very good. Thank you. John Mark, I'll give you this original back. Once you sign that, will you make us a copy so that I can provide that for Joyce for our minutes? Item number five, considering possibly approve, executing an inter-local cooperation contract with the Texas Department of Safety relating to the failure to appear program. This is not a new relationship with the Department of Public Safety. This, we began this back in 2012, and this agreement with Texas Department of Public Safety, and this particular agreement with them was automatically renewed annually from 2012 on, and there's been just a couple of changes here, and so Texas Department of Public Safety asked that we review this and sign a new agreement that will renew every three years. There's a cost reduction in the cost of what it, what we charged each one of these defendants in one of their cases. That's really the only other change, but let me just briefly tell you a little bit about what this is for. This is an arrangement whereby if there are folks that have outstanding warrants and things that they need to be taken care of, with the county specifically, it can keep them from being able to get their driver's license renewed. So there is an intermediary vendor involved in this that handles the electronic notifications, but this way, if somebody owes money to the court, or they're, for whatever reason, the county wants to get their hands on them, and they have not complied, they can be denied having their driver's license renewed. And sometimes it's a quick and easy fix, somebody, sometimes it's somebody that definitely needs to be, you know, apprehended. So let me read this letter from the Texas Department of Public Safety. Enclosed, please find the revised contract offered by Department of Public Safety. As it relates to Chapter 706 of the Texas Transportation Code, complete all the appropriate entries on the contract and arrange for the approval and signature of the providing official authorized to sign contractual documents in your, in your jurisdiction. A little bit of background, according to this agreement here, as permitted under the code, DPS contracts with a private vendor to provide and establish an automated FTA, Failure to Appear System, that accurately stores information regarding violators subject to the provisions of the Transportation Code. DPS uses the FTA system to properly deny renewal of a driver's license to a person who is the subject of an FTA system entry. This contract applies to each FTA report submitted by the court to DPS or its vendor, and then accepted by DPS or its vendor. The court will supply information to DPS through its vendor that's necessary to deny the renewal of a driver's license of a person who fails to appear for a complaint or citation, or fails to pay or satisfy judgment ordering payment of a fine and cost in the manner ordered by the court in a matter involving any offense that the court has jurisdiction of under the Texas Code of Criminal Procedure. This contract will be effective on the date of execution and will automatically renew on the anniversary date of execution for up to three additional years unless terminated earlier. And anytime there are changes to this that we need to know about, they will notify us and probably ask for a, an approval of a new document. So this is a good service that we want to continue to have. This is how we can have some control over folks that don't show up for court or don't pay their fines. So I would ask you to allow me to sign this document and enter into this agreement with TechDOT and their vendor.
I'll make a motion, we approve it.
Motion for approval is made by Commissioner Parker.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Applewhite. Any questions about this?
What was the amount that went up or down, if they're charging us?
It went down from $30 to $10. It's part of our court cost that we charge. That's how this, that's how this project is, is funded when folks go through court. And if they are not convicted of it, then obviously they don't, they don't pay.
Mm-hmm. How'd it go down? What is that? It's what the victim has to pay, the 30? So what did the legislature change it to the 10?
Now it's 10, yes.
That's not in our control, anyway.
Six, that's right. Six of that goes to the vendor at $4 states here locally.
That's legislative stuff. Okay.
Okay. We've got a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, item number six, following up on previous discussion, discussed sale of the Riddle Street building with possible action to follow. Commissioner Fitch has been researching this project, and he'll report to us.
So what I found out, a good way to, that we can approach selling this, this property with a government building or a public building with a city or something, we can reach out to all our real estate brokers and ask them that we would like to get a proposal from them, how they want to sell our building, give them, you know, like a six-month contract, let them appraise it and say, this is what we feel the, the building is worth, what we can sell it, what we can get for it, and what percentage that we're gonna charge you if we handle your building. So if they actually come down to like 5%, and another broker has a client and buys it, then that, they're just gonna get the 5%, so that's understandable. So I'm asking to reach out to these real estate brokers, let them give us a proposal on the building, and what they want to charge as a percentage, and how they're gonna advertise it for sale and such as that, maybe a six-month contract, and pick the best one here at the court. All of us together, I'll offer them up, and we'll see who has the best deal going and what we feel like will be best for the county. So is there any questions on using a real estate company? Period. If we pick a real estate company, understand how that's gonna work, they will receive offers, and then we'll either turn them down or accept them.
Well, first of all, you're saying you're gonna let the court decide?
Yes. Today's just to decide, decide if we want to go that route.
So the court will see if a, a particular company makes a proposal, it's gonna stay in there.
That's the first step.
What tip, what sales percentage they're gonna charge you, what they're proposing to list the property for, how they will market it, and then even if, once they get the listing, let's just say, for example, that Redford Real Estate gets the listing, that doesn't mean only Redford Real Estate gets to sell it.
No, anybody can sell it.
That way they list it on their, you know, national website, and any brokerage company could actually complete the sale, but it would be up to them to split that commission according to whatever they work out on the deal.
Yes, and then it's up to us to accept whatever offers we get on it, so.
Why, we would just do this without making a minimum, without putting a bottom line we'll take for it. We just would leave this open, the price. It's like taking bids. I thought we were supposed to take bids on stuff. I have a list here, I prepared. At last meeting, we discussed this, and I have a list of the people, the repairs that I knew about.
Well, let's, let's hold off and talk a second about this, and let's get your question answered, answered there. Because I think this is an important discussion.
I think this would be a professional way to find out what the building is worth, because it has some values to it, other than just a building on the corner, because it has a really hefty lease agreement, bringing in $42,000 some odd dollars a year just for the lease on that building. So that adds a lot of value to that building that's, I'm not smart enough to put a finger, my finger on it, what, what I think that building's worth. We can get it appraised by these, these companies and let them tell us, and we won't be out in appraisal. So they turn in their, their, their offer on how they want to sell it and what they think it's worth, and we can either go from there and say, no, it's too cheap, we're not doing it. So yes, it will have a minimum, for sure. If they say it's worth $300,000, we may want to offer it up at 350 and go from there. So it's totally up to us.
And, and there are-
Just want to be fair with the real estate companies.
There are, there are brokers out there who might consider an auction format, but that is an important decision for you all to make here, because Commissioner Riddle brings up a good point. If you've got county property, typically county property is sold in an auction environment, and that can be over a, you know, several month period of time. It can be a one-day auction. There's different ways to do that. But I, I suggest we listen to a proposal from a real estate company and, and ask them those questions, and, you know, why would we not want to consider an auction format? That may be the best way to go. Who knows?
You think getting a real estate's opinion is better than getting a professional appraiser? I don't understand the difference. Why? What's the advantage?
We've discussed that. We can certainly get a professional appraiser to do this. If you'll recall, we paid $1,500 each to have those two buildings back there. He told me that typically he would charge $2,000 for an appraisal like that. So I think we could count on probably a $2,000 fee to have a professional appraiser appraise that building. So that's why we're having this discussion. If you want to go in that direction, we can, we can certainly do that.
Well, this come up last time, and I quoted you the toss that we have in that building. We've got six years left, and I've managed to get all the receipts that I could, and we've got over $345,000 invested in this building that I have receipts for, that we've put into this building. For us to set up and try to sell it, we'd really need to, and we've got this nice contract that we've been lucky to have and a good tenant, and I think that for us to, to go out and take anything less would be absolutely wrong. So I don't know how you can do business without, there's a minimum.
What do you show us the original purchase price?
I show it, $150,000, $145,000. Then I added up all the bills that I could find, receipts that I have, and they come to $100,303. And then when that was done, that was $253,000, we, in the commissioner's court, I got the minutes, workforce said for $129,000, they would, it would cost, they wanted the walls changed and all the changes made to fit their needs. And Chris Basham come to court, and he-
Do you have those figures there, that, what we spent, what we spent on it to get it remodeled for workforce?
Yes, to get it ready, right here, and I got a copy of each, anybody who wants a copy of it. And then Chris Basham, we give, I don't have the receipt for that. He was using three different companies to bill us, Engage-
Why don't you have those receipts? We should have all that.
$90,000, but I, I don't have any of them. I got one receipt, John Coburn had to write, I asked for a receipt from Chris Basham. He said he wasn't giving us any receipts, and then John Coburn had to contact-
Well, you should, you should have evidence of what we paid to him included in those figures, wouldn't you? We'll, we'll have all that.
He was billing us under three different names, and I asked Carl once, why are we paying him that? Engage Concepts?
Well, it still should be all accumulated under that one-
Oh, I don't know.
Under that one account.
I didn't bother. That was after the fact. That's after I give up. So we got that much money in it. If you guys, I guess, it's just like anything else, you spend it, I, I-
We're having a discussion here. Tell us how you suggest we do it.
We're just trying to find out exactly what and how to get rid of it, mainly, just to cut, cut, cut out of the business, get out of the rental business, myself, and real estate business, so I just want to do it right.
I want to bring up another question. Why did we pick out this building to sell? Do you realize how many more buildings we own? We just spent $50,000 on that annex on the corner, and then we paid, we let those people move in from across the street for Paris, Laura's Cheesecake, and they, we put in a toilet, they paid in part of the money and stuff like that. And I realize we shouldn't sell that one because it's probably, what about the government buildings we got up on Eighth Street? We got tons of money in that. How about the meal center? That thing is, eats us alive, and those people that, that are using it have big, big grants from the government to serve those meals. Why do we, why do we pick out this one? I'm curious. Why do you think this is the one we're selling?
I just picked it out. My basic reason is, the t-shirt company over here, I think we'll be able to use that space right here by the courthouse for offices in the future.
Wait a minute, wait a minute.
I'm just joking, because we use the back of that building for storage for our election center. You know, and we're talking about that front corner office right there?
Yeah, but-
That's possibly more valuable to us than Riddle. I don't think we want to move anybody over to the Riddle building or anything.
Wait just a second. We just, less than two months ago, three months ago, we decided to buy, try to get those two buildings on the corner, so we could have a clean slot over there.
We were checking into it, correct? We haven't bought anything.
Well, why would we want to?
And I, I don't feel like we have the money to purchase them if we did buy them, and we don't have the people wanting to buy, get a bond and raise taxes to buy them and build a new courtroom, and that's my opinion. So a lot of rumors are flying, but we were just speculating future growth. It's just, that was just planning for the future. That don't mean we're taking any action on it. I've also heard the rumor we were buying the old First Baptist Church building downtown here, and we're, that's never been brought up. I've never heard that before, but rumors fly, and it's completely false. But I just, I mean, I can only tackle one project at a time. I mean, I thought, take it on myself, bring up something to take on, you know? One step at a time, I'm trying. The meal center is another thing in my pocketbook. I'm thinking, maybe we could partner with the city or something on that meal center. I don't know if that's a required for the county. I'm new. I'm new, y'all. We can check on it. If we, if we can sell that, maybe sell it, but I, I like the program for our senior citizens, the meal center. I think that's a great thing, especially if they get their meals paid for by grants, but we do own that building. And I'm not aware of the Eighth Street, what you're talking about on Eighth Street. I don't, I don't know which building that is.
Well, that's just, that's amazing.
Is that the Health Building?
This is, yeah.
Okay, I didn't know we owned that, so that's new. I went through- I went through a tax appraisal district at different properties and I hadn't seen that one that Titus County owns it.
Let me finish my sentence while I go. We just agreed that we're gonna try to sell that property because what we're gonna have to, we're gonna have to do something with Annex. We all agreed to that at a commissioner's court meeting. Now, you're saying that we've got to look into that. You don't think it's worth, worth the...
There's a lot of options on that Annex. We had it looked at. I mean, there's a lot of options. We can do a lot of repairs over there. It saves us a lot more money than raising taxes to pass a bond or going to a banker and borrowing money on it. So, I want to look at the most conservative approach first, Al. So, nothing's in stone.
I think we should hang on to the Riddle Street building unless we can get our three hundred and forty-five thousand dollars and I think we ought to get out of the Riddle building. And other than that, as long as we have that lease, I think that's what we should do. And then the Annex building, I don't think we should consider getting, getting those people out of the building or using that building again. That thing, it has mold in it. It has mold. I guarantee you, we're gonna have a problem. That building needs to be gone, in my opinion, and we've all agreed in commissioner's court. All of a sudden, you say we're gonna sell the real estate and you pick out this one. I think it's very strange.
Well, you got to start somewhere, Al. I mean, I'm getting darts flying at me and accusations on anything I do. So, I mean, that's just whisper politics. I'm just trying to do something instead of being a house plant on this board here, on this commissioner's court. So, bringing things up, you may not be far off on what that building may be worth, four hundred thousand. I don't know until I get some appraisers to look at it or real estate people or professionals that know what all is coming in on that building, what's all been done to it and the condition of it to even get a price on what it would sell for. But I am for liquidating some properties, so.
Whatever you say, Lord, I guess that's what we'll do.
Back to the, the getting bids on it, I'm just not sure if that's the correct thing to do without getting it, lease getting it appraised. If we were gonna do bids or we're gonna do a real estate company. So, I will make a, I'll make, I'd like to make a motion to have real estate companies, the brokers in Mount Pleasant, give us a proposal on what they think that building is worth and how they want to sell it, what percentage they're gonna sell it for. And we can look at that and we can bring it up in court and then we can vote on it and do what we feel is best for the county. I mean, it's just a procedure. Let's try going at it with the real estate company. That's my, that's my motion.
Well, we're required to have a minimum, right? Now, what would keep them?
You're the commissioner's court.
Yeah, we would make that. Yeah, we can make that minimum, I mean.
Got a question in the audience. First name councilman, come on up.
Hey, guys.
Good morning.
Tell me, tell me again what the lease amount is on that?
We get thirty-seven hundred and fifty dollars a month.
That's not right. We get a raise every two, three years and I think we're...
We just got a new contract.
I think we due it for a thirty-nine hundred dollars next month.
So, it's thirty-seven?
Wait a minute, wait, wait, wait. Barbara, it just got changed from something to thirty-seven fifty. That is with the three percent.
I don't think it goes into a...
It's gonna go up again to thirty-nine hundred?
And you have, and you have them locked in for how long?
I don't know. I have the contract right here.
They're on, they're on an option.
Obstacle.
They're on an option.
I mean, honestly, I mean, I'm all for using local people to do certain things, but when you get into commercial real estate, you start looking at a lot of different things. You look at a cap rate, which means money that they'll get paid back over a period of time and how fast it'll pay itself back out. And you're talking about, there's companies out there that specialize in commercial real estate. And it would surprise you how they utilize the payment, the payment of the lease in there and how quick that'll make the amount of, the value of the property increase. So, I think if you'll just, if you'll take into consideration, our local guys are great, see what they say, but make sure you bring in a commercial specialist and they will try to evaluate that as well. Not that our guys can't, okay? But if you open this up nationwide, I mean, there's people out there that buy commercial property for nothing other than to put their money into, in it and see how fast it makes it back and then, then they'll, they'll keep it in a portfolio. So, just another thought in the process, something for y'all to consider. I mean, I totally understand wanting to get the money back and that's, that's the deal, but I think it'll, it'll surprise you what the value will be with a lease of that amount.
Getting it appraised, commercial.
Getting it appraised by, and get your local guys to do it, but, but don't, don't just fall into the deal of going, hey, I, and I want everybody to be local as they can. But sometimes when you get into a process where you have a specialized building, sometimes it might make it a little advantageous to you to go outside.
If you have any businesses like that that you've ever dealt with or have knowledge of, if you share those with Commissioner Fitch, that'd be great.
Yeah, I will. There's, I mean, I mean, you know, you can look in the Dallas market anywhere and there's people that specialize in commercial property.
So, our lead, our guy that looked at these buildings over here wouldn't be qualified. You're thinking, this is something to deal with, something on.
I don't know who looked at them and...
He's simply an appraiser.
He just apprays the building. He's talking about the worth and what it's bringing in, ROI and all that.
Well, the value of this building is heavily weighted towards the fact that it's got a very favorable lease on it from a governmental entity that's been in there and expects to be there for years to come.
Absolutely. That's where your value is. I mean, basically what you're looking at is a metal prefab building. I mean, that's what it is. But, so the value isn't necessarily in the dirt and the building and the walls. The value's in, in what you get back out of it.
That's right. That's right. It's very complicated.
So, so make sure when you do that, not that our local guys cannot do that, but I would at least seek one commercial professional, that that's all they deal with to come in and look at.
Okay. I consider that. Also, I was looking at this agreement here, started March first. It says twelve-month period of thirty-seven, thirty-five hundred and seventy dollars a month. That's what I'm getting for the rent.
It's here. What's the date on that one?
January seventeenth. Twenty-twenty.
Twenty-twenty. And the current rate that it goes to in Mar, when does it, when does it go up? In March?
March first. Uh-huh.
The new rate is what?
Thirty-seven hundred, thirty-five hundred and seventy dollars.
I couldn't remember. I was thinking it was thirty-seven.
Some confusing stuff there.
Yeah, thirty, that's right. Thirty-five hundred and seventy dollars is what it will go to. Okay, so Commissioner Fitch has made a motion. You want to kind of restate that?
I think I'll just table that motion. I think we're gonna need to have this evaluated differently now. This is a complicated building.
If you'd like to be heard, come on up.
If you're dealing with the people that specialize in that commercial real estate, they'll come give you an evaluation for free and, and just, you know, so your basic home here, when it sells, you're gonna be looking at six percent, okay? When you deal with a higher-end property or commercial property, a lot of times you can deal with the four percent or less, you know?
That's what I'm hoping for. I didn't want to be out of big evaluation costs, you know? So, I thought maybe real estate people, they're gonna evaluate yourself.
People that'll come in, take a look at it, they'll figure all your cap rates and stuff out for you and then they'll do it and it doesn't cost you anything. I mean, if you list with them, it costs you the percentage. If you don't list with them, you've got an opinion, you know?
Okay. I think that's great. I'm glad you came today, Galen.
What would you like to do?
I'd like to make a motion. What, go ahead, one more thing?
Also, I mean, you might be able to lump it into one...
Look at some other properties while they're here.
You've got some other properties you can look at. Might be able to say, hey, I've got five properties here where you can come and look at.
Yeah. I'll have to look and see what all is what on that, but...
Thank you, Galen.
Okay.
Okay, you've got a motion now.
I may make a motion. Let's make a motion, get this specialist to come appraise this, a commercial building specialist. I guess that's what that would be to appraise the Riddle Street property.
And we might get them to do a complex.
Try to do a bundle? Okay, we're...
Well, why don't you all decide?
We're gonna have to figure out what are we on first, too.
Okay, that's fine.
You know, you're talking about bundling stuff, you may not even be interested in selling.
Right.
If y'all are interested in selling a specific property, let's identify that before we just blindly go into...
We just heard of a new one today. You want to start with this one or you want to add some more to it?
That's fine.
I'm gonna get ahead of myself here.
No, we need, we're gonna be fine.
Okay. The motion by Commissioner Fitch is to engage a commercial property specialist to evaluate and assist in...
Getting an appraisal.
Sale considerations.
Yeah, to sell that building. Okay.
There's a motion.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Applewhite. All in favor, say aye.
No.
We have a no. We have a three-two, three-one vote. All right. We'll move on to item number seven, considering possibly approve our quarterly annual, or excuse me, not quarter, not annual, but our quarterly investment report. Barbara, would you like to tell us about that?
Yes, sir. I'll be happy to. You should have at your places in front of you the quarterly investment report. This report is for the period ending December thirty-first, two thousand and nineteen. The purpose of the report is to certify that we are in compliance with chapter two-two five-six and two-two five-seven of the local government code. That has to do with our public funds, that we are investing in the appropriate items that are within our investment policy and also that Guaranty Bank, who was our depository, that they are in compliance with the collateral portions of that act. So, you have eight items here. The first, the first page there is the listing of certificates of deposit. It's required that these are broken out by type of accounts. That's why you see general county, debt service, capital projects and fiduciary accounts. You can see the total, what it was at the beginning of the quarter and what it is at the end of the quarter. Then on the next page, you have all of the other accounts that we have at Guaranty, checking accounts, money market accounts and other accounts. We have the beginning balance, the ending balance. I've listed the account numbers here only with the last three digits in order to protect our investment, but also to allow us to be able to, to see how those transfer from one quarter to another and you can see how those, as we build these, every quarter you'll get another one. On page three are the fiduciary accounts. Then we have some fiduciary accounts there that are managed by others like juvenile probation, adult probation. Then we come to the total, checking, money market and other funds. And then the next section is accounts at other institutions. We have a surety bond for AAA bail bonds. That's not actually cash, but it is, has been listed as cash. I'm gonna make an adjustment to that to carry it as an asset, but not as cash because it is indeed a surety bond, not a cash account. We have Bryson and Bryson bail bond. You can see those are the amounts that are held at other institutions, not at Guaranty Bank. The next section is the listing of the FDIC coverage and pledge securities. You can see the FDIC coverage, the value of the pledge securities, and the listing of certificates of deposit that were on the first page, the listing of checking and money market accounts. These are just at Guaranty. We're not required to have any pledge securities at the other institutions because those are not over the FDIC limit to show that we had sufficient coverage in pledge securities that are maintained by Guaranty Bank of three hundred and ninety-two thousand as of December thirty-first. We're required to monitor the bank. We do that through analyzing the Bauer financial website. You can see the, the items there about Bauer, how long it's been in business. And Guaranty Bank does have a five-star rating. That's the highest rating that they give. They recommend all four and five-star banks, so we're good with Guaranty. Then you see my signature there. As the investment officer, I'm required to present your report with my signature. So, so there's my signature. The next page is the actual report from Guaranty. I gave you this so you can see that the numbers all tie out. You can see the total market values, the account balances and the excess pledged. The next page is something that I'm required to do just as a second step to make sure that the listing that Guaranty gives us is indeed held by our third-party bank. That's Texas Independent Bank for Safekeeping. And we've got those, those items there and they do all tie together. The next to the last page is the acknowledgement from Guaranty Bank signed by Captain Hane. Says they received a report, they reviewed the policy, they understand the policy and they've implemented procedures to make sure that they are in, in compliance with the requirements of those, those two Public Funds Investment Act pledged and investments. And then the last page there is a conflicts of interest disclosure from me. I do have an account at Guaranty Bank. You're only required to give one of these if your income, your investment income is over twenty-five hundred dollars annually with Guaranty. Mine is not, but I wanted to put that out there for public notice, just that I do have an account there. Some of you may too, I don't know. But I did file this with the clerk's office on November the eighteenth. You will receive one of these reports each quarter. The requirement is within a reasonable time. Most people say that that's about ninety days. So, I'll answer any questions you may have.
Thank you for doing this. This is a easy to follow format. And in the future, you'll keep us abreast of any, I mean, this is gonna stay fairly consistent, I would imagine, from quarter to quarter if and when we do something different, just maybe bring that to our attention. Here's a change here, other than just interest, interest income.
Okay. I'll do it.
Good report. We do need a...
Looks good. Make a motion, we approve the report, quarterly report.
Motion's made by Commissioner Fitch to approve the quarterly investment report.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Parker. All in favor, say aye. Opposed? All right, this will need a signature. I'm gonna pass it down to you for that. Moving on to item eight, approve oral and written reports. And you've got the second handout that Barbara has provided for you.
Make a motion, we approve the report.
Motion to approve made by Commissioner Fitch.
Second.
Second, Commissioner Parker. All in favor, say aye. Item nine is our treasurer's report for your consideration and approval.
Make a motion, we approve the report.
Motion is made to approve the treasurer's report by Commissioner Fitch.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Applewhite. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Item number ten is approved. Budget amendments. I have budget amendment number fifteen, and this has to do with our volunteer fire departments. Let me read Barbara's description. Uh, this line, this line item is used to pay for fire hoses. Historically, each volunteer fire department has received a thousand dollars for fire hoses during the budget process this, this summer. These funds were not allocated to this particular line item. Each volunteer fire department received the same amount in the 2020 budget, unless additional amounts had previously been approved. So, this is where you're allocating that, uh, money for the hoses that we, we missed last summer?
I went back and looked, and what I saw was, and it had been missed the previous year, too, and Carl had done a budget amendment at the end of the year for it.
Okay.
But I wanted to go ahead and do it now, because they are requesting the funds. They'd like to spend it now.
Okay. All right. So, we'll try to start doing this about the same time each year to make sure that we don't miss that at the end of the year.
Well, it was affected by, you had, it was supposed to have everybody get on it that had to get the deal, but they had a few that was dragging their feet, so we've decided to, that if they don't sign it, we're still not going to let these guys miss this opportunity, because they need this opportunity. And we're, and we've done this, we went through court.
I'm not sure I'm following it. They, they have to make a formal request to get that money?
No. See, they had, you had to, to get all this money, everybody, every volunteer fire department had to go and get in.
Take part of that group?
Yes.
Group purchase along with the city?
Yes. And then now we had a, a one or two that was dragging their feet, wouldn't give them a, a commitment, so we're not going to let these other ones go by the way and not get their money now, because they're waiting on other people.
Right. And if we don't use that group bargaining power, we don't get nearly as good a deal on it.
But they said it, we just, if one didn't do it, we still get the group deal.
Okay. All right. This is, uh, this is, is this new money, Barbara, here, looking at your other fire expense and volunteer fire departments?
No, sir. I'm talking with...
This is just a reclassification?
Yes, sir.
All right. Any questions on that? That's the only, uh, adjustment we've got.
What's the deadline on that? Do you know? When they're going to turn all that in? Who's going to turn in? If, if some of those are not going to turn in, you know yet?
I think they've got everybody on board, except I think they finally got...
Cookville finally got in?
Cookville may have not have turned theirs in yet.
Okay. But we're going, we're on go now. They have their order now, don't they?
Yeah.
They're going to turn in?
Yeah, they're trying to get the order together.
They can't go on their own to get the big, the big, uh, cut. They had to go to the city, and they all get it.
Because that's their loss, because they didn't want some hoses.
Okay.
I've actually been meeting with Chief McCray, and I plan to go Thursday night. They're having their fire chiefs meeting, just to talk to them, to see if there's anything else that they need, to make sure that we have the items on file that we're supposed to have in my office, and, um, I'll be happy to report back to y'all after that.
That's a good deal.
Okay, we have this one budget amendment then for your consideration.
Al got a question?
Huh?
Al got a question, a question?
No, I, I found more about the insurance. The fire department was asking us to pay the insurance, uh, and then them repay us. That's not a, that's not a delayed thing. All they have to do is fill out the paperwork, and they'll get the check for, reimbursed for that insurance because of cancer. Their, their workman's comp, it went up or whatever it was, but the, the, uh, Cookville, I looked at their paper, they get one. They already got a check back for three or four months. So, I don't see any reason for us being, uh, putting, putting that into our budget or their budget. And then I don't, the other question is, I don't understand. We decided a couple of years ago to give them that ten dollars a run or five dollars a run, but I asked where that is in the budget, and, uh...
It's in the budget under Fire Volunteers.
It is?
That's the line I, yes, sir.
I asked, uh, what's her name? She, she said it's not in the budget.
You'll come see me. I'll, I'll help.
Okay.
Okay. Y'all ready to approve this budget amendment?
Make a motion.
Motion for approval made by Commissioner Applewhite.
Second.
Second, Commissioner Parker. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Item eleven, sign and pay orders and approve payment of bills.
Make a motion to pay your bills.
Motion's made by Commissioner Applewhite.
Second.
Second, Commissioner Fitch. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Item twelve, closing comments, if any, Commissioner Riddle?
No.
Commissioner Fitch?
I'm good.
We covered the item that I was going to mention. I don't have anything.
I want to express my condolences to you and your wife, your passing of your father-in-law.
Thank you, sir.
And, uh, if you ever need something, let us know.
Appreciate it.
That was all I had, too. And I'm just asking people, just bear with me on these roads, because, you know, we don't, we hadn't got inch and a half, three inches of rain. We've had seven, nine inches of road, and it's just with five people, it's hard to catch up. At a hundred and twenty-five miles, it's hard.
All right. If there is nothing else, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Make that motion.
The motion's made by Commissioner Applewhite. Second by Commissioner Parker. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, everyone. Have a good day.